Where are the chairs? Eat mart hairs.
Actually, we need people to leave. Michael in the room is forty-four, pushing the lemon.
Then you should put that.
It is, it's on the front.
It's on the door, man. If you'd like to leave. Okay, let's just be quiet and continue the meeting. It is seven thirty, call the meeting board.
They just to the flag. To the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Perino.
Attending remotely from New Jersey here.
Cleared for landing, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Natalie.
Here.
Mr. Hardy. Mr. Thorne.
Here.
Mr. Nimitz.
Here.
Okay, we've got one, two, three. Four more. Presence and one remote, we have a forum, we have a meeting. Uh, minutes of, uh, April third, two thousand twenty-three.
So move the athlete.
Moved by the athlete, seconded by Hardy. Any additions or corrections or minutes? There being no changes, all those, oh, roll call please. Mr. Perino.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Mr. Natalie.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Harding. Okay, the motion so carries, thank you all.
President Pickett, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to move the swearing in police officer, Urban Peterson up to this point. Second.
Moved by the athlete, seconded by Nimitz to amend the agenda to move the item of number one under the police report of, uh, part-time officer to depart his position now. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that? If not, roll call please. Uh, Mr. Perino.
Hi.
Mr. Natalie.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes, the motion so carries.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend a part-time position of patrol officer to Urban Peterson in the village of Sleepy Hollow at a starting rate of twenty-four dollars an hour with the caveat that that could change uh, with the current collective bargaining uh, process that's going on right now.
Yeah.
Sir.
Moved by the athlete, seconded by Thorne to offer a, uh, position of employment as a part-time police officer, the village of Sleepy Hollow, to Urban Peterson.
Yes, yeah.
At a rate of twenty-four dollars an hour. Any other comments, questions, or discussion on the board? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Natalie.
Hi.
Mr. Perino.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so carries. Chief.
I didn't realize you were so popular if I didn't know. Tony's got a speaking.
We could have, uh, sold tickets and there would have been our budget issues for a long time. I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand, but before, I would like you to turn around and look, these are the residents of the village of Sleepy Hollow. They're here, they, they. I would love to think that that applause was for me, but I know better. But they really do appreciate our, our officers, part-time, full-time. And that's the show that, uh, you're gonna see, any one of these people should feel free to stop on the street and talk to you and be, and trust me, they will. So with that, with that introduction, please turn around, raise your right hand and follow me. I, state your name.
I, Urban Peterson.
Having been duly hired for the position of part-time patrol officer.
Having been duly hired for the part-time position of patrol officer.
In the village of Sleepy Hollow, King County, Illinois.
In the village of Sleepy Hollow, King County, Illinois.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And the ordinances of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of patrol officer to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the, uh, duties of patrol officer to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, one. Next item on the agenda is the president's report. Uh, gubernatorial proclamations, once again in effect, we are allowed to have a remote meeting this time, however, this will probably be it. Uh, we do not have a word from the governor's office, as to whether this will be permitted going into May or not. We have been told that all pandemic restrictions will be lifted throughout the state on May eleventh with the regular, uh, change of everything going on that day. Uh, so we'll move on to the next item, and that is the last meeting during public comments, Mr. Hoff asked for assistance and recognition from the village in his annual cleanup of Sleepy Hollow Road and various other parts of the village. Historically, we have provided Mr. Hoff with assistance. That has been with Public Works, some of the equipment from Public Works and the employees from Public Works. Uh, from the police department, the traffic control, we've also supplied, uh, yellow vests, et cetera. Uh, all for the mere amount of returning a, uh, release of liability to the village on behalf of those who participate. Well, I understand the release of liability requires a, uh, what you call it, notary. Uh, uh, sig- on the signature. Our police officers are notaries and they would be willing to notarize those releases of liabilities for this coming weekend at no charge to the residents. So, uh, the, the question, Mr. Hoff, is before us this evening to approve, uh, once again, the utilization of those village resources that may be required for him on Saturday, the twenty-second of April. Uh, along with them understanding that they need to, uh, return a release of liability to the village. Uh, with that, could I have a motion to, uh, recognize the efforts of Mr. Hoff and his volunteers?
So moved.
In the support of the village, moved by Nimitz.
Second.
Seconded by the athlete, any other questions, your comments?
Where do we meet?
Uh, that's Mr. Hoff's.
Right out here, this Saturday from nine to twelve is the duration. And, uh, I'll grab some stuff from Kyle. Uh, if anybody wants to attend, please bring a bucket, a picker. Uh, we'll supply the bags, we'll have a couple of trucks running around, emptying the buckets into the bigger garbage bins, and what we're gonna do is Bonkowski. Sleepy Hollow Road, seventy-two from thirty-one to Sleepy Hollow is gonna be handled by the service club. And then Rangel Road for the section that is Sleepy Hollow, from the church basically to Joy Lane and a little north of that. And anywhere else, anybody feels that we have an issue.
Okay, what's that, roll call please. Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Natalie.
Hi.
Mr. Perino.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes, motion so carries, thank you all. Okay, the next item on the agenda, motion to reconsider. A little explanation is required on this one. Uh, you don't typically see this on the agenda. And that is because it does not come up very often. But after the meeting on the third, there was some confusion. And there was some conversation and discussion as to what happened on the third. With that confusion, there comes an opportunity for someone to file a request for reconsideration of the vote. Okay? That request for reconsideration of a vote on a matter that has already been addressed must come from a party of the prevailing side of that vote. Okay? So the vote that is in question was the vote on the ordinance authorizing the storage facility on sixteen oh one West Main. So the clerk received a request for reconsideration from one of the parties that was involved on the winning side of that or on the determining side of that vote. Or a request to reconsider. The clerk conferred with me. I have said that that request could be placed on the agenda for consideration at tonight's. Okay? So that is how we ended up, under my report, with a motion to reconsider. He said that motion was brought by a party of the prevailing side of that original motion. And it's the only people that can bring that request to this board. So that is an explanation as to how that ended up. So it's on my agenda, the motion to reconsider must be considered first. Then we take the motion that was brought up and we take it, and it's regular process and the votes go from there. So on the motion to reconsider.
Is there a motion made tonight?
There is a motion to reconsider the vote of the ordinance granting a special use to allow a storage facility for the indoor storage layer of personal property sixteen hundred West Main and the B two business district in the village due to numerous discrepancies in the process of the last meeting.
All right. We have motion. Nimitz has moved. Second, we're in for discussion. Moved by Nimitz, seconded by Hardy. Motion to reconsider the ordinance granting a special use to allow the storage facility in the village of Sleepy Hollow at sixteen oh one West Main. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call please.
One call. Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Absolutely nothing illegal about this, it's. This is in Robert's Rules of Order, it's, it's a, it's a recognized motion. Um, it, it needs to be, as the village president explained. There are some limitations on, on making it, but the, uh, no side prevailed, uh, the prior meeting and then no side has made the motion. Anyone can second the motion. It's been moved and seconded, so it's on the floor before this body at this time.
Thank you, the motion to reconsider.
The motion to reconsider.
Correct. So, any other just questions, comments on the motion to reconsider, roll call please. Mr. Natalie.
Hi.
Mr. Hardy.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Mr. Perino.
No.
Four affirmative votes, one negative vote, the motion so carries. Okay, now, if we have a motion to approve the ordinance granting a special use of sixteen oh one West Main.
Don't move the athlete.
The motion.
Well, the, the, the original motion is back on the floor, it's to be reconsidered, so I don't know that you need a new motion tonight, but that motion that was made at the last meeting, which I understood to be a motion to approve, to enact the ordinance that would approve the special use for sixteen oh one West Main Street uh, in accordance with the ordinance that was before the board at that meeting.
Okay.
Is now back before the board and it's subject to debate and amendment and all the usual legislative processes that might, uh, take place.
Okay.
And it can be tabled if need be.
Okay, so the motion to approve the ordinance is back on the floor. Right?
Correct.
So the floor is now open for comments, discussion.
It is. It's open for debate.
Open for debate. And there were four items that we had the last time discussed. The hours were listed as five AM to eleven PM. You had talked about changing those from seven AM to ten PM.
And just quick point of order. Can Mr. Schuster summarize what the motion is on the floor, because we had a motion that, or ordinance that was in our packet. We had an ordinance that was here when the meeting started, and there was multiple discussions and consensus at that meeting, which I think you're getting into now, so if Mr. Schuster could summarize what the actual motion is right now, because that, that's part of the infusion. Could come from your minutes.
The, the motion is I make a motion that we approve the ordinance that is before us in the draft form that Attorney G- uh, Schuster provided us.
Which would have been the, uh, uh, an ordinance that I provided at the meeting, uh, on the meeting night for each of the trustees, expressing, uh, I shouldn't say that, suggesting for your discussion uh, conditions that are, uh, A through O. There was some discussion of a few of those, as you pointed out, that was not mentioned necessarily of all of them. But to avoid any confusion, I invite you all to look at those conditions now and determine before any, uh, uh, subsequent vote, if there is one, uh, that wh- what is to be included here or not. Uh, it, you know, a special use, another term for a special use is a conditional use. And, and this ordinance is a good example, you have recognized that in the B two business district, it would be allowable to have a self-service storage facility, but you reserve the right to put conditions on that development if it was asked for, now it's been asked for. And there are, uh, suggested conditions for you to think about. Uh, a number of those were the subject of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, before they, uh, took their vote. Um, and, and they were not, uh, emphasized after that because the vote at the Planning and Zoning Commission was negative. Uh, negative recommendation. So they didn't then, um, focus on what conditions they might, uh, recommend, uh, for this use at this location. But you should, because you're the final vote.
So just for clarification, what we're doing here is basically putting conditions on that special use. We cannot deny a special use that's in our ordinance, if he would have possibly legal action against us, we've already said yes.
Possibly yes, because a self-service storage facility is an allowable special use.
The other question is that the list of items that are, and it's not, you have it right there, what, what's allowed in the B two district?
Well, there's a number of, uh, it, it's a little more vague, uh, in the.
If you might, Mark, I not write it, B two district says shall include.
Right.
Committed uses shall include shopping centers, freestanding retail uses, health clubs. Uh.
Restaurants.
Restaurants, banquet facilities, and service businesses in general.
So if somebody were to come in and buy their property, want to put one of those in, the process would be they would just get a building permit, a site plan, and go straight through to the bill, and they would not come.
There'd be no action to be taken by the Planning and Zoning Commission or the village board.
Correct. And some of the conditions that we are placing would be greater than what their ordinances are for the committed uses, is that correct, Mr. Schuster?
Yes, the, the, uh, the list here before you has got, uh, some suggestions that exceed what would be the, uh, uh, standard requirements for B two developments.
So we have.
For example, the, the setback that, or the buffer that's being, uh, uh, as the petitioner has suggested and was, uh, discussed by the Planning and Zoning Commission of seventy-five to a hundred feet. Uh, your ordinance has a far smaller buffer requirement when there's a residential adjoining property. So that's one example.
Mr. Village President?
Yes, Anthony.
Uh, I have a question, I know there's a motion and a second on the floor. But my question would be if Attorney Schuster would be able to explain why there were discrepancies at the last meeting's vote? Or with the last vote?
I can't, I can comment on that, but, uh, it is, it, uh, uh.
I, I thought I had heard.
It's not, it's not a condition of reconsideration that there be any, um, discrepancies. But what I've heard is that there was, uh, well, number one, there was trouble with the audio and, and the zoning officer was not able to be heard or to hear clearly all of the questions and concerns and discussion that went on. It was also, oh. I'm told that somebody, there was some confusion about whether the vote was to be taken on the proposed amendments for the conditions or on the final matter. And thirdly, I don't, I don't, I made a mistake that the on a motion, uh, uh, on an ordinance that would grant a special use, the mayor does have a vote. And, uh, uh, he does not have a vote in, as to any variances. And, and, and it just, it got flip-flopped in, in our minds, we had talked about it ahead of time. In fact, every one of the trustees had a memo that explained that. Uh, and, and yet it, it just slipped by us. So, uh, those are, those are some of the things I'm aware of, I don't know if other trustees, uh, uh, have any comment on that or not.
I just have a follow-up to that, and I appreciate, uh, that information, Attorney Schuster. Um, I know that we currently only sit with five board members. We normally would sit with six board members. In the case of a vote, even the vote this evening, would, would the majority be the members who are present? Or would the majority have to be the total seats of trustees on a board, which is six, but we only have five present?
Or an act.
And.
I, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but I, I can answer your question.
Yes, go ahead, I, go ahead, please.
For an ordinance, it is required that there be four positive votes, regardless of the number. Okay, and that, that four, that, that count of four includes the vote of the village president, if needed. For a variance, there's a special rule in the zoning regulations, uh, that are published by the state. And when there's a negative recommendation for a variance, there, uh, must be four positive votes of the trustees. So that will be four out of five this evening.
Uh, correct, I thank you, I understand that, because I, I always, I, I thought I knew that the village president votes when there is a tie, in our case, three to three. But what I understand you to say that in any spec- any ordinance that is uh, written or developed for special use, that is the time that a village president can cast a vote as a trustee casts a vote, is that correct?
Any ordinance at all, for anything.
Any ordinance, for us.
Okay, so in the past, when we've had ordinances where, uh, it's been four or more in the affirmative, uh, that would have meant that at, in those situations, the village president would not have needed to vote because they already achieved the, uh, four, four, uh, affirmative votes, is that correct?
That is correct. He may, he may then vote as, as a choice, but his vote was not needed.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying the information. I have nothing further at this moment.
Okay. So we're back with the ordinance to allow the special use on the floor with a discussion of the conditions that we may wish to impose upon the special use.
So just for clarification, I, I think it's that the motion that's on the floor now is just that motion that.
To approve this one.
That ordinance, and that was the one that Tony had sent out a couple days ago, that's where it would know none of, and trustee Hardy's changes or related things that were discussed, correct?
No, they were not, correct, they were not included in that ordinance, that's correct.
And each one of those needs to get voted on individually.
Not individually, we can put them all together.
Okay.
The amendments have to be made to the main motion. So, if we want to change the hours, that's an amendment. Okay, we want to change the buffer, that's an amendment. But we will put those five, four or five amendments together in the vote. Okay? All right, what I had on my list was, we started with the hours. Uh, we had the five AM to eleven, the question, or the comment came back was, we suggested seven AM to ten PM. Uh, then the buffers. We, we didn't want seventy-five feet, we wanted a hundred feet in there. And the fencing, we said, you said that you did not want the fence any less than fifty feet, or you wanted it not less than fifty feet from the property line.
I, I have a, a, just to come back to the hours and number A for a moment.
Okay.
So Monday through Friday was seven AM to seven PM, Saturday, seven AM to five, Sunday was seven AM to five. And then for customer access, we had said, I believe at the last time, we had said it would go till ten PM, because that was our, uh, normal village. Uh, my, my suggestion there would my, my thought is if we stay till ten PM, that gives a customer who walks in, who, who enters the property at nine fifty-five, they're potentially there for, say, one hour. And, uh, I would rather see the customer access to unit end at nine PM, so that if they are there for the hour, they're gone by our ten PM uh, noise curfew time, if that makes sense.
What you're saying, Anthony, is that you would like them to be open till ten PM, but no one can enter after nine PM.
Uh, that, that's correct. And that I thought would come under the customer access to units, under letter A.
Well, 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 let's, let's get the hours first.
Well, but that, but it is, that is the hours, that, that was the suggestion that customer access be changed. The office, there was, I don't believe any discussion of changing the office hours.
But the office hours are fine.
It was the customer access.
Customer access.
Okay.
Okay, you're wanting to say that they have, it's got to end at nine PM and not ten.
They're saying.
Yes.
Gate closed at nine, but they have to vacate by ten, is that what you're saying, Anthony?
Well, if they're in the, if they gain access by nine PM and they're in the facility, they can exit at any time. Uh, but my quite, my thought was that if they enter the facility at ten PM, they also can access at any time, but they're already entering it when our current noise ordinance starts at ten PM.
We, we can put a limit on it, can't we? Yeah, how about we just say they have to leave by ten, Anthony, you okay with that?
I just want to say that they can't enter after nine PM.
Yeah.
I don't think you can enforce how long it takes them to leave, I think you can enforce how, what time they're allowed to enter.
Comment them?
Uh.
Why not? I think you can.
What's that? Somebody may just stop there for a minute. Mr. Ryback? Mr. Ryback, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, remotely.
Remotely, have you heard the conversation, sir, regarding the hours?
I did, and I would, I would love for the board to, uh, reconsider the hours and match them with the competition in the area. Because some of them are open from five AM in the morning, and they, they allow customers to enter at five and leave the, uh, at eleven PM. If we structure where our customers have to come in, you know, know earlier than eight, nine AM and leave by nine, or, you know, come in at nine PM, uh, it's very restrictive, you know, compared to others, so what I would suggest, uh, or I mean, propose, be, uh, six AM till ten PM, and the codes stop working, um, before and after. And then also we have a camera system and staff, um, that will be able to enforce that. And then also we have a camera system and staff um, that will be able to enforce that. Uh, rule, you know, for, and nobody will be staying past ten PM.
Uh, Mr. Ryback, if I enter your facility at nine fifty-nine. Am I, I, and I'm in that facility. How, how are you enforcing that I have to leave the facility?
We will be able to, the, the software will alert us, letting us know that somebody's still on property. And whoever used that code specific to a client, we'll be able to call the client directly on their phone to, hey, you can't be there. Um, you know, past this hour, that's, that's one way.
Mr. Brainerd, were you able to hear Mr. Ryback?
Uh, I was, I was, sir, and and all, um, I'll just suggest it one, one more time. That the, I, I, my, my, my position as a trustee is I would like the hours to be. For customer access to units, the hours to be six AM to nine PM. I don't really care what the builder wants to do. It's not his decision on what hours he's allowed to have. If he's coming into the village of Sleepy Hollow, if he has competition from West Dundee and Gilbert's and and all the other communities. That have storage facilities, that's not our board's problem. Our board's issue is to set standards and requirements. My recommendation is six AM to nine PM, and if the board has, is there's, if there's a consensus, then we can move to the next point.
Six AM to nine PM, six AM to ten PM. We had a five AM to eleven PM request.
Correct, and I would like to say six AM to nine.
We've got six AM to nine PM, we've got seven AM to, what's it, ten PM.
We're going to twenty's individually in this present figure.
What's that?
Just making census and just sixty.
Can I, Mr. Brainerd, you had earlier said access would end at nine PM, is that what you're saying that still?
Yes, as I read this, point A, for customers' access to the unit. What I'm proposing is that if I personally have a unit at that storage facility. I want to be able to enter at nine PM. And I know that I need to be out of that facility by ten PM because I'm going to be doing some work. I'd rather have that than be allowed to enter the facility at ten PM. And do my work and not leave until eleven PM.
For instance, or can you word it as such? I could.
Okay, so the consensus then is they can open at six AM and they can close at ten PM.
But access is restricted at nine.
The access is restricted because they've got, everybody has to be done out there at two.
Yes.
I'm happy with that.
I'm saying a lot of nodding heads on that, okay. All right, the hours that we're looking at are six AM to ten PM.
I understand that, go ahead, yes.
You're, you're happy with that, okay, Anthony, all right. What was the other item? We had a buffer. He offered seventy-five feet, you asked for a hundred feet.
I like to maintain the hundred feet.
Okay, I think that's the consensus of the room. Maintain the hundred foot rather than seventy-five that he offered.
And can I suggest verbiage of at least a hundred, it seems.
At least, okay.
Yeah, if he wants to do more, we're happy with that.
All right, on. On the diagram that we were given in this packet. I saw the figure to the fence. It's not going to be put on the property line and it is moved back to eighty-two feet. And then the building was going to be another thirty feet. Okay. To Mr. Ryback, if we made, or we talk about moving the fence to a hundred feet, are we talking about the building? We're talking, the buffer was a hundred feet, the fence is not to be less than fifty feet from the property. That was the comment made at the last meeting. Wouldn't it be better for the residents that live there to move that feet as proposed here, eighty-two feet back? And then another thirty feet to where the building would be as proposed, wouldn't the neighboring residents prefer that?
Well, the question is, Mr. Ryback, can you put the fence eighty-two feet back on the property?
I have a question as far as to which side of a property are we talking about here?
The south side, between the residents, south side, south side.
So the west side is not part of that conversation? Yes, we will work with the board as far as to the distance uh, allowed, yes. Uh, we're okay given more square, more, more, um, more feet than um, the ordinance of Ali.
So, so for trustee Hardy, right, just looking and I asked attorney Schuster about this, so. There is one residential property on the west and then I believe a lot that is its own business that is currently residential.
That's, that's not on the business.
Oh, is it? That's just the house, okay, so there are two residential properties on, on the west side, so, do you want to reword that or? We want some buffer on the west side? Is there any now?
Um, where you want to put the fence?
Well, the fence on the west side. Probably won't work at eighty-two feet.
Right. But, but that's not what's proposed there. Forty feet, on the west side, forty feet, plus another twenty-four.
All right, well, there's a, there's a buffer requirement on the west side in your village code that will apply. It doesn't deal with a fence, it deals with the, the landscape, uh, we're talking about. As I understand it, where, where a fence might be put up. Uh, a security fence surrounding the storage facility. And on the south side, you're suggesting that be eighty-two feet.
That's what.
Well, it's supposed to here. Well, it's a concept.
Yeah.
And, and. The concept is developed without the uh, detailed engineering that will support it.
Okay.
So. Mr. Ryback would tell you that, you know, when he gets into the detailed engineering, there may have to be some adjustments. I understand his concept, he proposes eighty-two feet for that fence on the south side. And and that's your suggestion, is the south side, that it be recessed, setback from the property line at least eighty-two feet?
At least, yeah.
So, just for clarification, it's the fence and the buffer.
We already talked about the talk for being that lesson.
Oh, okay, yes, we're just the fence, okay, that's why, that's why I was asking to clarify.
So the fence, the fence could be in the middle of the buffer somewhere.
Yeah, it's not a trustee, I think it's an issue, at least they need to be.
Right? Fence could be in the middle of the buffer somewhere.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And just for clarification, once the, once this is voted on, these restrictions on this special use. They cannot come to the board and say, we want it to be, cause of engineering, we want to lessen this or do this.
They have to go through the process.
They have to go through the whole process again, they have to go through the. Public hearings and this, this is, this is the law now, it can't be undone. Maybe undone, but it's.
Can be undone, but only through the, the whole process.
Yes, not just a simple vote.
Correct.
Okay. So, the fence on the south side will be not less than fifty feet from the property.
Eight.
Eighty-two?
Yes.
Eighty-two.
And the buffer shall be at least a hundred on the south side.
And the buffer will be at least a hundred on the south. Okay. All right, now. I could just make a comment or two, I think we need to all realize something here. In the past, the board voted a long time ago, make this property D two commercial. They were thinking of the residents at that time, restricted uses are in print. Financial institutions, gas stations, auto repair, car washes. Restricted, they can't even put in for a special use permit. That, let me say this, that property is owned privately. That homeowner could come in and remove every tree on that lot. A developer could come in. And if there were no conditional uses. He has the right to go in there. Is that correct?
It is.
Careful what we wish here, we're trying to, right now, we're trying to. Come to an agreement on conditional uses to reduce the impact as much as possible for the people that live close there. The property is B two condition, okay?
And can I, just for clarification, in Mr. Schuster, and, and I hate to bring this up, but it's, it's out there. There is also a possibility that it's owned by an individual, they could be annexed to either the county or to West Dundee. We have absolutely no control over anything.
Well, they can make that petition.
Right, yes. And.
That's a good point, West Dundee is contiguous to that property. They could, property owner, for whatever reason, could put in for de-annexation. And I don't see how we could stop it.
For the houses that are on.
Okay, um, moving on, so we decided on, we decided on the buffer at a hundred feet. And we've decided that the fence not less than eighty-two feet, this is on the south side, Mr. Ryback. Uh, the other item that we had discussed last, or the third. Was to request that the developer explore the possibilities of an access from the east. We strip mall to the east, we asked if he could look into obtaining a drive through there. Uh, and then the other item that we also discussed was the sunset. Sunset had been twelve hours or twelve months and it's been suggested nine months, we still want to stay with the twelve.
Yes, yes.
I'd like to go back to nine.
I got three heads nodding at, nodding at twelve, Anthony.
I, I understand, I also would like to visit letter B. Which I don't think we talked about last time, you may have others to review, but I don't want to miss uh, B when we're finished up here.
We'll go with B, Anthony, what is it?
It currently says the number of self-storage units on the subject property should not exceed a number. I don't know if, does the petitioner have in mind approximately how many uh, units would be in this current proposal?
Mr. Ryback, did you hear the question?
Well, um, I do not have the exact total amount of the storages because as, as you can tell, we're moving the. The buildings by thirty feet, we reduced the amount, you know, the two-story into a single story. So I would say we were, I, I would, I would be guessing right now, probably be about three hundred units.
Uh, you just mentioned something, Mr. Ryback, about. A single story, I don't think we've addressed that yet, have we?
No, no. That's a variance, that's a variance, Anthony, that hasn't come up yet.
Right, okay, I, thank you, so.
Go ahead.
So, so right now, he's thinking it's going to be about three hundred units based on. Well, what I heard him say was, I think he's, it's three hundred units based on him thinking it's a one-story, one-story main, main building.
Really, all depends on the engineering part of the build out. So if we move in buildings or possibly thinking about entering from the east or from the north. It will be a significant impact on the amount of units. So right now, I don't have the exact number, but once the engineer comes in there. They take into account the slope of the facility where the retention ponds will be and so forth, and the gates. Uh, then I can tell you the exact amount, as of right now, I don't have the exact uh, number.
So, so thank you for that answer, so a question then to the board is, can we put a number on it? And again, I. You know, I mean, you can.
That's like telling somebody how many rooms they can have in their house.
Yeah, I, I understand. I, it is, uh, it is, it's a.
Put my cars in my garage.
Okay. Anything else on B, Anthony?
No.
Okay. Under conditional uses, somewhere in this hundred and thirty-four page document. I haven't found a color scheme, did I miss something here? And if color scheme hasn't been addressed, I would request that the units be. The color of the units be in a woodland color scheme. I think the woodland color scheme would blend more in line with what's in the community. So is, is there a color scheme that's been proposed and when will that be decided? Mr. Ryback? Mr. Ryback, did you hear the question?
Sorry, the, the audio is going in and out, uh, as far as the colors, the colors will be submitted to the um, for approval. Uh, with the permit. We're open to suggestions as far as colors, but um. Yeah, we, we, we don't have the colors picked as of yet.
But a woodland color scheme, you would see no objection to that, woodland color scheme is defined, but it's shades of green, shades of brown. Shades of tan, what, what, what would you, what you would see in the landscape of the village? There, there would be no objections that you foresee at this time?
As long as we can obtain those colors on storage um, facilities, then we're, yes, we're open to, to the colors.
Okay, so.
One of the stipulations then is the color scheme should be woodland colors, woodland color.
I support that, yeah.
Consensus is we will support that requirement, Anthony, something else?
Uh, no, no, I guess maybe just a, a general statement and I, and I appreciate you allowing me to make a general statement. I, I, you know, in the last couple of questions, we've heard some unknown facts from the developer. And trustee Hardy is, is suggesting some things, which I know if they go into this as. Requirements or restrictions for this to go in. But, you know, fast forward nine months and the developer says, I have to make the building red. How, how do we, how would we address it at that time?
No permit would issue, no building permit except.
Oh, okay, thank, thank you for that, because that's what I'm kind of sensing. That we can put these restrictions in, but when he goes to his engineering folks and they come back and say this, this, and this. Then at some point, the building, the, the uh, application for all the details. A building permit could potentially be denied.
And if they do not meet the requirements specified in this special use, it's denied.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So are there any other restrictions or covenants that you would like to put on this?
I just have a question, because I don't know, there, I've seen it on the site plans, lots of discussion of. Detention, detention retention plan and the buffer, where does that fit in there? Cause I, I hate to see it jam right up against somebody's backyard and in the buffer. Is, is that potential and should we restrict, can we and should we restrict for that? Right, it's Mrs. Dedmore, where that fits in the whole process.
They have, you know, the King County Stone Water ordinance, and they have the overall per, the various, oh, just they have. And so they did. They have the, the location of where it has to be via engineering, they have to look at the, the gradient. The runoff and everything like that, and that's designed by engineering.
I guess my question is, can we restrict how close it is to somebody's backyard, because I assume it'd be fenced in. Or, it, could it be in the buffer, I mean, that's. Could be part of the buffer.
It could be part of the buffer, and again, the buffer is what he's volunteered to give um, as, as the natural habitat between. As, as the natural habitat between, um, property line to there. Um, and so, without. All of the final engineering, we don't know if you want to restrict it, but again, restrictions of. The single patient and additional buffer is moving. Like he gave on his concept plan, which is purely a concept plan at this point. So it's, it's up to you folks, if you want to push it back and give a minimum distance, that's. Within your right to restrict that.
Trusty Harney, you've done a lot more research, do you understand the question there?
The gradient is to the southeast corner.
Right, so, so are we comfortable with it being right up against somebody's property line in their corner, if that, if need be, or do we want to? Request that it be set back from the property lines?
I would think that based on the King County engineering assessment, that. Maybe as a village, if we could say that that retention pond. Could not be any closer than. Uh. Twenty feet to the property line. And if that is able to be. Uh. Done, you know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know, maybe they say, hey, guess what? Retention pond's gotta be so big, and it's gonna be five feet from the property line, but I don't know, if we can say, I would throw out, you know, has to be. Within, uh, uh, further away than twenty feet to the property line, the edge of the retention pond.
And we do need to say it's a retention slash detention, as that has not been determined yet whether, which it needs to be. So we could theoretically under H four, say retention slash detention shall be. At least, at least twenty feet from the south property line. Because the east property is your, your commercial already.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So.
That would be fine.
Restriction detention, retention detention. On. Must be twenty feet. From the property.
Uh, so. Sorry, I'm, I'm just writing, be a minimum, when you said it also, one of you is writing it. Of twenty feet. Let's say twenty or twenty-five, twenty-eight, okay. Whichever, whichever you turn on, one.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, thank you.
Yeah.
Twenty-five?
So.
Twenty-five?
Uh, how, how is water, how is water, how's the building gonna access water?
That's not our reports. And the bargain here, Anthony. That's an issue he has to deal with.
Yeah, just for clarification, he has to pay for all water connections, and if that's efficient, whatever, yeah.
Waterline ends to the east of him, he will have to go over and tap into that and bring it to his facility. Will also have to do the same with sewer.
He will be connected to the village, he has to connect to the village water and source system, that's totally at his expense. Yeah. And there's a connection fee, which.
Inspections would have to be right.
Thank you.
After talking with several residents, they expressed the concern of the quality of the building itself. Looking down at our diagrams here, I see the building, especially when they're in the back and. Sides, it's a. Between the masonry columns, there's going to be E I F S. Installed, and I didn't know what that was. Uh, so I looked it up and got an opinion on Angie's List. That it's going to be constructed with the I F S, that stands for exterior insulation and finish system, which. According to Angie's List, it is synthetic stucco, it's a special product. Good so far, it, it's a product. Years ago, but had problems with water behind it. But today's, today's E I F S is now six layers. And Angie's, this is a quote from Angie's List, when E I F is installed correctly. It's waterproof, it's more flexible, has a higher R value than traditional stucco. It insulates better, has less cracking, and is more, has more durability against harsh weather. It's more expensive in stucco, but it stands up, uh. The con, if you will, said it could use occasional power washing. But it, but in today's standard, it's a superior product.
And if you look, there's more, is the fence defined in there, or is it just a fence, the type of fencing?
In the.
The conditions have, uh, conditions of, is that acceptable to us?
And there's options on the fence. Or. The southern fence, is it privacy fence? It's proposed, it's galvanized, in vinyl, ones that have a, a privacy supplement, we're getting ahead of ourselves.
That's not what's in your ordinance, so at least compare what you're thinking to what's stated there.
The ordinance is eight-foot decorative aluminum.
Eight-foot decorative aluminum?
Yes, where fencing will be needed. Because that's, you may. Part of the concept was to just put the fence between buildings, to use the exterior wall, so there may not be. A full perimeter, again, this is a concept plan.
Right.
So his first thought was to keep the fence just between the buildings. But if he has to go out for any reason, then we'll have the eight-two feet that you, um. Decided on.
Types of fence in the ordinance we have now?
Eight-foot decorative aluminum. So it's not gonna be galvanized, it's not gonna be. Like blown, um, it, it can't be wood, it can't be plastic, it's going to be decorative aluminum fencing.
But in the back, the idea of.
Everything is the same. Everything is the same, eight-foot decorative aluminum. That's what's in the ordinance, that's a restriction.
Right. Wouldn't Bramble have the wall, so we don't see that?
What about on the exterior, uh, if that is facing residents? Is it gonna be just a blank wall, or can he put up fake windows?
And, and we wanted to say that was all.
What it looks like, it might be, uh. A resident, you've got windows, and so it just could blind the wall.
I was gonna go with.
Concept plan has vertical masonry.
Just for clarification, the concept plan has, is just the ordinance, concept plan is just there, so if we want something in the concept plan, we have to put it in the ordinance, correct, Attorney Schuster?
Yeah, the requirements that were given.
So that's a good question, if we want people to be able to see in between the buildings to residents' backyards, or we want to say that the building wall has to be the whole distance, or what, you know? What it was?
Wall.
Flex. You're saying.
Yeah, we're going on, I was just talking.
Go back for a minute, you had, you had mentioned a privacy fence on the south side.
Yes.
Is that, is that something you're considering? That's not in the ordinance, so the concept plan doesn't control that. The ordinance says all fencing will be decorative black aluminum.
I would think there's a lot of privacy fence in the back.
I, one way or the other, I don't think we want people that are in the parking lot and units being able to see into people's backyards, or even it's a hundred feet, I think that that's unacceptable. So I don't want that wording in.
But, but Mr. Nemec, if you have the vegetation and the, the natural barrier, trees, shrubbery, whatever. Would that? Uh, a, a, and the fence within the eighty-two feet. Would, would that not be enough for visually looking?
I don't know, if I'm asking the question, so it's.
And.
There's, there's heavy trees back there, and I would also like to see. Them approved to be able to add some understory trees. By the way, that's volunteered.
I'm not hearing the consensus, so I don't know what, where I go with.
Tell us in the audience, please, we're having difficulty hearing ourselves.
Trustee Reno, is that, do you agree that winter comes, leaves come down, we don't want? People being able to see in from. Whatever, imitating the buildings and the people's backyards, one way or the other, we need to restrict that, is that kind of what we're?
I, I, I completely understand what you're saying, so my, my suggestion would be, uh, and I'm not sure of the height. But let's just say that the eighty-two foot distance that trustee Harney mentioned should be a fence. My recommendation would be, it would be an eight-foot privacy stockade style fence, whether. Uh, aluminum, not aluminum, but poly, polypropylene, or, or wood, or something that would. Uh, basically, prevent any visual. Uh, uh, being able to visually look from the storage facility itself into. A neighbor's yard during the months when the trees are barren of leaves.
President?
Yes.
May I refer everybody to I, your landscaping requirements? Which, under number one, says that proper, or let's see, in addition, name and church, and then, um. Number four, have once matured nursery stock block the view of the structures from neighboring residential buildings. They may not even have a fence. You folks don't want fences, so we're trying to keep the fence to a minimum. So if he puts the fence between the buildings. And doesn't even need a perimeter fence. You're then trying to add an additional fence in where he's already giving, recommending seventy-five to a hundred, which you're sitting now saying a minimum of a hundred-foot natural buffer, which has to be maintained. For our risk requirement. But then the additional, you have your landscaping that you haven't even addressed yet, which is supposed to help provide that additional natural buffer to a love for wildlife. Natural habitat, which should also block, and a natural barrier will be much. Better, in my opinion, than any wood fence that could get knocked down by. Wind or decay. Uh, wood fences decay, that's why the, the planning and zoning commission did not really want chain link fence or anything with slats in it, because they've seen where that goes. Um, bad, so the decorative aluminum was the. Most restrictive that they could recommend. And so the fence. Will only be where it needs to be. But then the natural landscaping has to provide that additional mature buffer. From visibility to the neighbors.
I would say put a fence wherever it's required to keep public access off a private property.
And that's the intent. And that's, that's why the eight-foot fence is in there.
Okay.
For where it's needed.
As long as it does that. Okay.
I would agree.
All right, where are we with the fence?
Eight-foot aluminum are necessary, and according to all the other requirements. Whole perimeter, if it's only needed by the fire code, but it may not be, because that was put in to restrict. In case it comes in when the actual site plan is developed. We're trying to cover all the bases to keep it as restrictive as possible. Under a concept plan, where we don't know for sure what the final product is going to be.
Make sure.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
All right.
And so again, on H four, we added per retention detention time of the aluminum of twenty-five feet from the south property line.
Yes.
And then we should be moving on to I, the land seafaring, which is what I was trying to just direct you to.
Okay.
And supposed to provide year-round interest in color. No landscaping. As part of the, the, you have maintained, well, we'll, we'll have to change this, the, uh, buffering. On one. And then we still have to meet requirements for buffers as described in section eight dash five dash seven, you still have to have the landscape ratio. And then, again, mature. Landscaping, so blocks. None, none.
That addresses some of your understores questions. Given all that talk about fencing, is the eighty-two foot? Is that out or in, that remains, or?
It remains as needed. Depends on whether the building comes back, and there's no need for a fence. If there is a need for a fence, then we want it eighty-two feet. Building blocks. All right. Anything else that we want to look at?
Not building it.
No more restrictions, no more stipulations, no more questions? Then we're coming to the vote?
I have a, I have a question, uh.
Quick, Anthony, what is it?
Uh, well, it, it's actually, it's actually a statement, so. Uh, I think that we just, you know, right before we go to the vote here, we need to also keep in mind that planning zoning. Uh, gave a, a, a no recommendation after they did all of their due diligence. For this location, for this type of faci- of facility. I know as a board, we've come up with these restrictions and these conditions, if you will, that would need to be met for. Uh, the petitioner to continue to move forward with this. But, uh, you know, we need to consider all the, uh, village participation, which was P and Z and the board having. This conversation, you know, over a couple of meetings, so just keep that in mind as we go to our vote. That's all I had.
All right. My further comment?
Yeah, I'm gonna be coming up. The zoning board gives the findings of fact. To the. Trustees to the board here. Those findings of fact. Are what we use factually to determine. And to come to our decision. The, we, we have an advantage over the zoning board, we have expertise, paid expertise available to us. The engineering department, the legal department, the finance department, so we have. These benefits to, to look into the situation further. So we give careful consideration to the zoning board. But again, there's just a recommendation, and we rely on finding some fact. That's where we made that decision.
All right, moving forward then, on the amendments. We have the hours. We want it to be six AM. With everybody gone by ten PM.
Gates locked at nine.
Gates locked at nine. A buffer of, uh. Hundred feet. Not to seventy-five, we want a fence. Not less than eighty-two feet from the south end of the property if needed. We also like to seek access from the east if possible. Uh, and then we've got, uh, the color scheme should be woodland. Woodland. Color schemes. And retention detention pond should be a minimum of twenty-five feet from the property line on the south side. Those are the changes, do I have a motion to approve the amendments?
So move the athlete.
Motion approved by the athlete?
Second.
Second by four? Okay, for the comments, questions on the amendments?
Did, did, yeah, I do, I'm sorry, I do have one, did Mr. Schuster earlier this evening make some statement that potentially this? Motion could be tabled?
Um, well, Mr. Nemec asked that.
Mr. Nemec asked that question.
And, and is that?
I, I mean, it, it's subject to all of the options that are available to you under Robert's rules.
So. We're, we're, and, and part of the discussion, we're now voting on.
We're voting on the amendments, Anthony.
Right, that, that are the changes that we've suggested.
Restrictions that we're imposing upon the developer.
Okay, thank you for explaining it.
Okay. No further other comments, roll call, please. Mr. Nemec?
Aye.
Mr. Thor?
Aye.
Mr. Harding?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Bram?
No.
On the bottom of five, the amendments are accepted. Amendment.
Four to one.
Motion.
Four to one was the vote.
Four to one was. Okay, now to the main motion. Once again, call please.
The main motion may be to approve the ordinance. Authorizing a special use to allow for a storage facility, a self-service storage facility. At sixteen oh one West Main Street in the V two Business District. As amended.
Yes, so we have discussion on that if we so choose.
On the main motion.
Main motion, sure.
On the main motion, yes. Once we have a motion to approve. On the main motion. All right. We've got the main motion on the floor, so now I'm gonna call for the vote for the main motion.
I have questions on that, so.
You have a question?
Mister Schuster, one more time, could you go through the process of when. Zoning approved this special use? And what are legal restrictions are on such what we are legally able to say proven, not approved and why? You know, I'm saying that, that. That the zoning board approved.
Well, the zoning board gives you a recommendation.
Prior to when they approved. When we added especially used prior to this. We're going way back.
All right, you're going back to the time when self-service storage facility was added to the village code as an allowable special use.
But the process was there and what?
Well, there was a, a public hearing, uh, there was a recommendation from the zoning, uh, the planning and zoning commission. There was then an ordinance enacted by the board. And it's in the village code. Is that what?
Correct, so that if, if they were to get turned down. What legal reasons can we use to turn it down? We're basically just putting restrictions. Uh, I correct on it, we are not allowed just to say no because we don't want a storage facility. Anymore.
So.
Roll call please.
I have a comment, sir, I'm sorry.
Mister.
So I would like to make, uh. Uh, an amendment, or not, I would like to make an amendment to the motion that this motion be tabled until the new board is sworn in.
That's not an amendment, that's a motion to table and that, that's fine. That's the motion is to table this matter until, uh, a May date, uh. Correct, a more, a more exact. Term is a motion to postpone.
Okay, then I will like to make a motion to postpone. This decision of the Village of Sleepy Hollow Board. Until the new board is sworn in, I believe that's probably May the first.
A motion on the floor.
I'll go ahead and second for the sake of discussion.
I've got, I've got a motion on the floor for the vote.
I don't know the answer to that. You, you're asking which motion takes preference?
Seconded for conversation, let's have the conversation.
Let me start the conversation by saying. Let, let me start the conversation by saying, since I made the motion. That the decision that this board is going to make. Is going to affect the Village of Sleepy Hollow for some years to come, and because we're on the verge of. Uh, myself, I will not be on the board after May first. Uh, I, I know there's, uh, another trustee that will not be on the board by May first. And there's also an open seat on the current board of trustees. Those three seats will be filled by three new, newly elected, uh. Uh, individuals who, who won in the, uh, April sixth, or April fourth consolidated election. And I believe that in fairness to the future of the board. That those individuals should be involved in making this final decision. That's why I made the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call please. Mister Nemic.
Uh, yes.
Mister Thor. This is on the question to postpone, right?
No.
Mister Harni. Mister Dattley.
No.
Mister, uh, Perano.
Yes.
Let's keep it quiet so the board can do its business. Okay, the vote is greeted to. Or the vote is two ayes and three nays. To the motion to postpone, therefore the motion to postpone fails. We are now back to the main motion.
I thought he was looking it up, isn't he looking up the rules to say whether or not?
Would you please, sir?
Well, it was taken up by the, by the board, the question that I. Concerned was if which motion had a preference, but the board is now taking up the other one.
What about we the people?
I can also say that being remotely, I would also appreciate the residents in the village boardroom. To kind of be a little quiet, I know it's a tense situation, but it's actually difficult for me to hear my own board members. Being in the state of New Jersey, so I just appreciate some cooperation from the residents sitting in the building, thank you.
Okay.
Again, what about we the?
Well, a, a motion to postpone to that, it's. Go beyond the next meeting of the board.
Right.
But that would be May one.
But their motion failed.
Yes.
Okay. So now, the motion to postpone is failed, we are back to the original motion of the. The motion to approve the special use request by my. We've had the conversations, we've had the discussions, we've. Made a list of restrictions and conditions upon this. So now it's the time for the vote, roll call please. Mister Nemic.
No. Excited, no.
Mister Perano.
As representative of the village residents, I say no.
Mister Dattley.
Aye.
Mister Harni.
As a representative of. Residents of the village and in their best interest.
Mister Thor.
Yes.
Three to, three to, village president votes aye. It's four to two, the motion so carries. Okay. Next item.
My property right there, no, fuck you.
Ma'am.
My property is right behind there, I don't want those people coming, every storage unit that's ever been, it gets robbed all the time. How are you gonna protect my house?
The conversations, we have had the vote.
We have conversations, you had conversations, you didn't even ask for a phone. No, go wait your finger at me, sir.
I'm waving at the door.
Can I say something?
No, this is not an open meeting.
I'm thinking, how can someone come here and, and put a storage shed up and, and an eight-foot fence?
Sir, please. That's a different side, that's a different question, a different.
Ten storage units within three point four miles.
After the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda. The ordinance granting the special use has been approved. Okay, there were two requests by the. Petitioner that accompanied the special use, and that was the. Request for the floor area ratio to be different. Or to be a point four-three rather than a point two-three, and the other variance was to have a two-story building.
We discussed the two-story.
We can talk, yeah, two-story version. Yes. On the two-story variance.
Emotionally required to accept that variance?
Uh, the variance, you can make a motion to accept, no, we don't have any. Where Mr. Schuster? Grant the requirement?
Yes, because this is never voted on.
Okay, okay, here we go. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash five, ordinance granting a variation of requirements of section eight five three B one. Regarding the floor area ratio and regarding the building height. Okay. We have a motion to so approve. Ordinance. Granting variations and requirements. We have a motion to. Grant. Variances. Requirements. Conversations.
The original motion will.
It's all ranches, but I'm two houses on April the 10th.
Okay.
Real question. It, it's already gonna go through, we already know that. But the variance of a thirty-foot building, that whole entire block made up of a single-family ranch.
Sir.
That's what we're discussing.
No?
If no motion is made, it's dead on arrival, so it would not be approved. Correct?
Uh, if there's no motion, and there's a motion, actually, we move on to another right.
So that would settle. This two-story.
Okay. Okay.
There's gonna be a motion to approve.
It goes to my.
Pardon me?
You moved to approve it and then you vote against it in order to have.
There's no motion, no second, it dies. Okie doke.
I'm not sure when it comes to a variance by state law, you have to make action on it, I believe.
Well, that would be action.
Yeah, no action. On the variances. Have asked for a motion to approve the variances that's presented. We have no motion, we need a motion. We have no motion at the moment. Well, if we have, if nobody moves.
If nobody moves, then there's no action taken.
No action taken.
Should take some action.
As I say, yeah.
Well, the president brought it up for discussion.
I brought it up for.
Can't, can't force somebody to make a motion.
We force it, so. We leave it go, we go to the next item, next item on the agenda.
If that's, uh, if that's. The, uh, pleasure of the board.
Join one, join twice. Clerk has no report tonight, other than I have a headed. Okay, P and C report. All right, the attorney's report. We have a resolution approving collective bargaining.
Sir President, you appointed a bargaining, uh, committee, uh, and, uh, we have been, uh, busy, uh. In meeting with representatives of the Illinois Council of Police. And, uh. We are reporting tonight that there is an agreement. For a new collective bargaining agreement from twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty, well, through, uh, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. For the full-time sworn police officers of the village. And, uh, uh, this resolution would approve that. Proposed collective bargaining agreement on the village side. The, uh, uh, union representatives have, uh, uh, approved it.
Okay, this, oh, twenty twenty-six?
It does. We, uh. The collective bargaining agreements here have been for three-year terms. Uh, this, the current one expires April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, this one would be made in twenty twenty-three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, any other questions on the work to bargain, part-time or the full-time?
This is a full-time.
It's a full-time. And, and for clarification, this is your resolution number five five one. Resolution five five one, approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Illinois Council of Police for full-time police officers. The Village of Sleepy Hollow.
I'll second it, or, or I'll make the motion if it hasn't been made.
Hasn't been made.
I'll make the motion that we approve the collective bargaining agreement as mentioned by. Attorney Schuster and President Pickett.
I will second.
Moved by Perano, seconded by Nemic to approve resolution five fifty-one, five five one, five five one. Any comments, questions or discussion regarding it? If not, roll call please, Mister Dattley.
Aye.
Mister Harni. Mister Thor.
Aye.
Mister Nemic.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Okay, five of four votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay, next item on the agenda. Resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Illinois Council of Police for the part-time. Police officers of the Village of Sleepy Hollow.
Be able to determine if the part-time officers have approved this.
I've not heard, uh, since our negotiating committee on Friday.
Right, I was, it was left, uh, uh. As a follow-up, uh, we believe they will. Uh, it, it is, we're presenting to you what's been negotiated. The, uh, resolution is drafted, should call for. Uh, village approval, but no signature by the village until you receive a sign, uh, original from the, uh, union. To evidence their approval, uh, and, uh, I guess if, so you could. Uh, enact that resolution, and if it's not forthcoming, you know, we'd have to bring it back at the next meeting. Uh, or you could, uh, table this until, uh, the next meeting.
Continue it.
Postpone.
We, we can still vote.
Postpone. I believe so, uh, uh, and, and, uh. You know, the, the, the catch there is that, uh, the village isn't going to sign until the union has signed on it. What was needed after our, our session, uh. On Friday was for the union representative to pull his memory.
Yeah.
And be sure that, uh, they, uh, concurred in the representatives, uh. Positions on the, uh, the points that were negotiated.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept, uh, our collective bargaining agreement. As long as we receive a signed copy from the police union first.
I will second that.
And that is resolution five five two, okay. Resolution five five two, uh, was, uh, was moved by Dattley, seconded by Nemic to approve resolution five five two. It is the collective bargaining agreement with the Illinois Council of Police and the part-time. Police officers of the Village of Sleepy Hollow. It is the collective bargaining agreement with the Illinois Council of Police and the part-time police officers of the village of Sleepy Hollow. Okay, any further comments, questions, or discussion on that one? Not, roll call, please. Mr. Nemic.
Hi.
Mr. Prano.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Mr. Harney. Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so carries. You are. Okay, anything else from the attorney's report? All right. Uh, engineers report, in your package you will find the, uh, review of NICOR's permit, one thousand and one, zero, five, three, two, for the work one thousand and one West Main. You have a motion to sole prove?
Sole.
Second, pardon. Moved by Thorne, seconded by Harney to approve the permit from NICOR for the one thousand and one West Main. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Prano.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Mr. Nemic.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so carries, thank you all. All right, that's it for the engineers' report, the next item is the Department of Finance.
Like a motion for the approval of the warrants, the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-six cents.
Move, Harney.
Second, Thorne.
Moved by Harney, seconded by Thorne to approve the warrants in April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
One hundred and fifty-four dollars.
One hundred and fifty-four dollars.
And sixty-six cents.
And sixty-six cents. Any additions, revisions, comments, or questions concerning the warrants? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Prano.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Nemic.
Hi.
Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so carries.
Um, normally, the late fee for the vehicle stickers and pet tags kicks in on May first. Um, which the last day that you can purchase them without a late fee would be April thirtieth, which is on a Sunday when we upload. Um, I would request to allow us to collect for the village's use and pet fees until three-thirty on May first without a late fee.
I'll make that motion.
No, sir.
Arena.
Moved by Prano, seconded by Thorne to authorize the village clerk to waive late fees on vehicle and pet stickers, uh, through three-thirty PM, May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Any more comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Thorne.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Mr. Prano.
Hi.
Mr. Nemic.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so carries.
That's all I had of this thing.
That's it, all right, next item is comments from the public, do we have a signing list?
Sir President, the sheet seems to have disappeared.
Oh, nice.
The sheet disappeared.
Is it possible for, I had one thing I was going to say, nothing pertaining, pertaining to what we just talked about. I don't know if I wanted to. I just had a request, actually. Uh, as everybody knows, unfortunately, in our country today, we've been flying the flag at half-staff more than full staff. And I know that the village flagpole's not in the greatest shape, but the flag is always at full staff, and the fire department has their at half-staff. And I, I, as a service club member, we will try to see if we can take care of our flag down at seventeen Park, but I think it'd be look, make the village look nicer, more patriotic if we could find a way to lower the flag when everybody else is lowering their flag as well. That's like how.
Okay, thank you, sir. Was there anybody in here that signed up when that was disappeared?
First one, actually. Boy, maybe it's a point. Thank you, so disappointing. What, one of the things I realized after being in this meeting again was I feel that the board of trustees needs to be at every plane and zoning public hearing. You need to hear what the people say. You need to hear their concerns and their questions and their comments. You stand before us, we vote you in, and yet you do not listen to any of us. I did research, there's fifty-seven hundred storage units available with ten facilities. That's a lot of units. That doesn't even include the new one that they're building at the old Dominics and Hunkin and Grand Aro. Every single manager I spoke to could not believe the Sleepy Hollow, the community that we are, the restrictions that we are given constantly is going to allow capability like this, to put it. I also asked Mr. Ryback, do you own any other storage units? Because I don't know if you know, he's a heated and air-conditioning guy. What does he want with storage units? I don't know. So I did, I found it in Florida, this is what it looks like. This is what's going to happen to Sleepy Hollow. This is going to be left like this. He's not going to care, he's coming in here with all these pro- promises, he is not representing himself correctly, and you guys, again, are allowing it. And Mr. Pickett, one thing I also noticed, when even though this is after the fact, why was your urgency of putting it back on the table? I fought for a Freedom of Information Act, because I want to know who two board members filed to want to put it back on the table again.
Excuse me, ma'am, if I may ask, you filed a FOIA request?
Yes.
When did you file that?
Today.
Okay, thank you, because I didn't have a response to it, I just.
Well, actually, I contacted one of my state's attorney offices.
Oh, so you're going through them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Because I got to make sure I'm getting what I'm supposed to be getting. Um, let's see, I'm Miss Scott Meyer. Where did she go? She left, huh? Well, I'd like to know why she said, at the end of the meeting, when you guys voted no, and we were all very happy about it, that she said they're going to be happy when they, when they, um, when the property gets dozed. Is that like a threat? That you're going to take away the woods next to our homes that we've had for, I've had for twenty-two, three years, and all the people on my block have had that nice little cushy thing? She's, well, she didn't get her way? Do you know how that makes us feel? That you don't care about the people who are living there? Not one of you lived down in your manor. Not one. Have you come to our homes to see how close that's going to be to our homes? I can see everything that goes on in that retail mall, and I can tell you, I've driven over there, and I could see everything that goes on in my yard. This is just despicable, it really truly is. And I'm embarrassed that we're going to have something like that in our community. I really truly am. I really wish you would have thought twice about that, I think you were making decisions, I think somebody has a stake in something here, because I don't understand. You're telling the planning commission board you have no respect for their decision by voting against them. They're there, they did everything they needed to do right. I went to both of those meetings, and only one that was here was Mr. Perillo. That was the only one who came. He's the only one who cared. Didn't you guys care? Don't you care? Have you done your research on this guy? I bet you none of you have. That's how I found this little wonderful storage unit in Deerfield Beach, not even in Illinois. I asked him. Shame on you guys, just shame on you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Is there anyone else that signed up, she would like to make a comment?
My name's John Payton, I'm a fifteen, fifteen-year-old. We, uh, subcommittee reported, uh, an issue came up that I didn't see the April third meeting, the best net. So I don't know if it brought to your attention. But one of the members of the subcommittee has the question, he found it hard for him, he did not vote to, to recommend the storage unit. And his reason was, he didn't understand how the government can tell residents they can't build a storage unit in the backyard, but somebody else can build an equivalent service for profit in their community. He found that immoral. I agree with him. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not, yes, ma'am.
I live on Lowell Court, my name is Gander Kowalski, um, you know, I understand that the lot's been for sale, obviously, this is a done deal, but I understand that something eventually needs to go there. But as we all know, a storage unit facility is not a necessity for the area by any means, and within time will probably become dilapidated like most of them do, and how his look online, if those are really his, which I'm sure they are. But nonetheless, my concerns are also, you know, if a fence goes in, how do we know, or how is that person held accountable to keep up with the same, or ke- keep up with the stucco-like stuff on, you know, as the, uh, whatever, siding and everything else on the building, because as we know, if you drive on Sycamore Lane, it's not pretty back there, it's horrific, actually, and I feel bad for those neighbors, obviously, different decisions were made at a different time, but that's a huge concern, especially since we have a grandfathered-in pool that backs up to the property line on top of it, you know, so again, whether a fence goes in or not, obviously, we don't want to see it, we want privacy on top of privacy for our pool and privacy that people can't just walk into our backyards. You know, it's disappointing. Uh, the whole thing's obviously disappointing, no one's happy with it, and it's very hard to come to these meetings and think that you guys are for us when we don't feel like we're being considered at all, because everything just goes your guys' way, which, fine, you're on the board, you're trustees, but like, a little consideration or, or something would be nice, and I appreciate you, Ed, because your points I get, if this goes through, I think those things needed to, to be put into place, and I appreciate your time, and did. But overall, it's just sad, because have you guys driven down that street? Have any of you? You have? Can you, can any of us?
Did any of you talk to Nina?
I tried calling everybody. We got one person to call back, or one number that worked, but, um, you know, in the end, again, I grew up in Dusty my whole life, I was so excited to live in Sleepy Hollow, and it's, it's been disappointing, and on top of it, we pay a water bill when we're not hooked up to water, because we live within a hundred feet of the fire hydrant, which I understand, but I've also called multiple times, I even went to high school with Kyle Killinger, and I can't get a phone call back because there's been a sinkhole next to it for years, and I've been told online it's been taken care of, but there's still a big hole next to the fire hydrant in my front yard. So how do I even trust that you guys can put in decisions, and I can't get phone calls back or get things taken care of? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, oh, we did have one that just.
I'd like to address my concern with the height of the building.
Your name is your.
I'm sorry, your name? My name's Kyle Kowalski, I live around, I think, Lowell Court also.
Thank you.
So the height of the building, I know everybody just keeps saying, oh, it's two stories, it's two stories, and that doesn't sound like a lot, thirty feet is a very tall structure.
So it's only going to be twenty.
Yes. That variance was suspended.
Okay, we didn't know, we were sooner.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
I said that motion was not made.
So it's on the table, it's off the table?
It's not. It can be.
Okay, that's what we were wondering.
So, how do we start the process if we want to reconvene or re-motion what we just motioned for today? You have to be right.
I, I explained that reconsideration early.
You had that, like in.
The natural rules of order, motion to reconsider must be made by a member of the prevailing vote.
Okay.
And that is what we did today. Okay, well, when we got to the variances, there were no motions made to address them, so the variances have died. Okay? All right.
Hi.
Sorry, you already had your time, sir.
I think, um, one thing that's concerning the residents the most is and it's concerning the most of the residents is the feeling of the politics of this, um, considering everybody saw, you know, how planning and zoning went at that meeting, everybody saw how the last vote went. When we were fortunately able, somebody, you know, saw on the last, you know, last hour, twenty-fourth hour, that there was something like this happening, you saw the response from the people that you're representing, you saw how many people were like, this is not right. And I just think it's concerning that there's so many people now that are seeing the politics of if somebody or some people want something to go through, they're going to find a way to make it through, no matter what, and that's what's concerning to the residents. Um, and so, you know, whether or not this is the right thing or not, I personally don't think seven, eight thousand dollars a year is anywhere near accurate, or even close to the loss that's going to happen to the community, but I think that the loss of trust in the board because of the politics of what happened, was probably the thing that's most concerning to anybody with the board. It might get worse, I don't know. Hopefully, there can be some trust built again.
And I know, with the president's permission.
Yes.
I would like to say. I can understand your perception there. As far as the board, as far as I'm concerned, I represent three thousand residents in this village. And I, I know these guys on the board, it's hard to vote when a group like this comes before us, that I can, I have to consider the needs of three thousand residents. Remember, it could be a lot worse legally, our hands are tied, we can only do so much.
Sure.
Um. There's no politics, there's no secret deal, it's being.
I don't believe that, but what I do believe is three thousand.
We're not going to get into a Q and A.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying seven thousand dollars for three thousand resident, residents.
Should I?
Yeah, that's.
I can, I can understand your frustration.
That's how about we leave it. I think something needs to go there.
All right, there was one.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Anthony and Ed for at least talking to me, then one of the other trustees, uh, had the courage to call me back and talk about this. Tell, uh, for the rest of my time, I'm in a black shirt.
Excuse me, sir, what's your name?
Uh, Steve Stocken, I live in nine-one-two East Horn.
Steve what?
Stocken.
Stocken?
Stocken.
Stockens.
I, uh, had talked to me for about forty-five minutes, and Anthony too.
I think, uh, you sent me a text today.
Yeah, I did respond.
Yeah. And I, I did answer your text.
No, I didn't get nothing.
I can show it to you.
Okay, that's.
If I get five minutes, I like to defer those, my time to sit down with that dude.
We don't pass time.
Let's be nice. Well, then I still have five minutes, so I will just take a quick.
What is your question?
I asked, what was the prevailing vote? I didn't understand that.
Explain the prevailing vote to us a little better.
I'm straight to.
Was the three, the prevailing motion?
On the motion.
On, all right, three people voted to approve it and voted for it.
Oh, on that was four to one, four to one. On the special use was four to one.
The previous one, I made it come up today. The red, the voted the time, but we let it last, but we needed four.
No, we had a simple majority on that one.
Was there not a vote?
No.
Four votes, and then we get three?
No.
It was four to two. It was four to two.
Four to two.
Four to two. Yeah, the variance required, four. Okay.
Yeah, and then there's the motion to, there was another motion, the, the motion to postpone was.
Not, I meant.
Lost three to two.
I meant in the last meeting.
Oh, the meeting on the third?
Yes.
That was three to two.
Right, so three was prevailing.
No.
That was wrong.
Two was prevailing.
Two was prevailing, so one of those two people changed the mind.
Right.
Thank you, that was the clear conditions.
That was, okay.
Thank you.
All right, one last item on public comment, this was received by the clerk prior to five this evening. Uh, hello, my name is Alicia, I've been a resident of Sleepy Hollow for just over eight years now, my husband and I purchased our first home and started our family here. Part of why we love this area is because of the small, quiet, and nature-oriented field of the town, adding a storage facility essentially is, in several residences, backyards will not only take away that atmosphere, but it most certainly negatively impact their property values. We strongly oppose having a storage facility built at sixteen-oh-one West Main Street, thank you for your time and consideration. Okay, closes public comments. And to the trustee reports, roads and parks.
Mr. Harney. If you haven't noticed, Sabino Park is now ready for the delivery and installation of the new. For the delivery and installation of the new park equipment. I'm giving a call to Clay Illinois. Already moving forward, making sure things are on schedule. The schedule is by the end of the day, but we should have moved our park equipment at this part. And that's all.
Okay, finance, under finance, we've got the review and approval of the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Is there any packets? And then uh, you've got Mr. Van here to go through it line by line, if you so desire. We have a motion to approve the budget for twenty twenty-four.
So move.
Moved by far and set by the athlete to approve the budget for twenty twenty-four as presented. Comments, questions, or discussion?
So, the budget that you have, that you had in your packet was um, based on the approval of the contracts. It was not the budget that the Congress Committee. So, the majority of the stuff is exactly what it was with the Vikings Committee. With the exception of most of the things that we got, the colored boxes, which were all the salary components that were adjusted based on the new contract. Once, a couple changes that I think we need to make. That I looked over again this morning. I don't think we're gonna have um, the, the payment made in this fiscal year. For the uh, park installation. Um, because with, you know, basically two weeks to go, by the time they actually install it and we do bill, it's gonna be in the next fiscal year. So um, I would like to adjust. The equipment seventeen fifty-two eighty-six fifty-nine forty. To a hundred and thirty-three thousand, which is moving the forty thousand. That was uh, originally on, on the budget to um, next fiscal year. And also, we had received the notification from the state through DECO. That we are eligible for a two hundred thousand dollar grant. So we have to be, we have to put that in our budget in order to spend it. Um, one of the big things that needs to happen is um, flood control within the village. Um, there's two ways we can do it. We can pay a company to come in and dig out the soil, stuff like that. Or we can purchase the equipment and get the engineering to have it done. And then, this project could go on for decades rather than just a single year. So um. One of the, the items that Kyle would need would be a mini excavator. And we figure with the cost of the excavator plus the trailer and stuff like that would be about a hundred thousand, which would be about half of the value of the loan. So it would be using up the equipment item uh, seventeen fifty-four eighty-six fifty-nine forty. Up to a hundred and sixty-five thousand, or fifty-five thousand. And then we, the remaining portion of the DECO loan under this um. Other improvements, which is seventeen fifty-four eighty-six fifty-nine twenty, so that line then would go to two hundred and twenty thousand. And we designate for um, the engineering for the soil work and, and we grow work. I think those will be about the only changes. From what you have.
Yeah, but that does not change our bottom line.
It does not change our bottom, it, it goes with, with the loan, it goes in and comes out.
Wow, we want it to our bottom line, we are forecasted to have a surplus of a hundred and forty-eight pounds next year. That's gotten pretty close.
Well, and I say having done this for fourteen some years and you longer than that, that. The way we've paid for the five-year cap, which is going to be our snowplows, playground equipment. Swat cars, like um, but extra money, we get some MFT money, but we put a lot of that into roads and otherwise. Come from the money we're not spending. So if you look at, and Eugene had the numbers there, we should go by the big board, our five-year cap. Expenders and what's left over for, can you read off the next like fourth, what did you run out there?
Well, it, it goes down. It's not, it doesn't look good.
Yeah, and to say that we have spent. Good money after bad in the past, where we've not been in the situation in the past, and Steve's been around for that, where we couldn't afford a new snowplow. So we're putting new hydraulics on it, we're putting a new bed on it, we're basically spending. We're putting three thousand dollars into the furnace to repair it because we can't afford a new one, so. That, we are. Making, scraping by, but we're spending every dime we have, we're putting nothing in the bank to purpose any in the future.
This particular year, twenty twenty-three, we actually should come out with a surplus. Um, what has happened is that I M L's figures were low. Um, we did not anticipate getting the interest income that we, we. We have gotten more in any single month than we have in the last five years.
But we've also did not buy swat cars, we, we could not get it.
Right.
We did not get a new pickup truck because we couldn't get it, they're too expensive. We prefer the roof on the salt barn and the building is turing now for how long yet? I worked on it a while, you've worked on it, I think. It's on, I mean, year, decades, a decade now at least. We had Mrs. Denver gave us a free inspection of the roof. Tenish years ago saying we're just one thunderstorm away from having half the shingles fly off. You know, our, they've been painted over, but we used, when they had our work in here, we'd get leaks and you'd go up there and tar it up and. We'd spray some kills on it to keep the leaks away later, so, yeah, we are. Yeah, so I just had to say that, but last meeting say that, so it, it's time, you know, the last referendum that failed. We came back with another one to get some money, just to turn the streetlights on and do that, but that was a. Third of what we needed.
It was a third of what we needed, what we, what we, yeah. Thought that we were gonna need to sustain the village going forward. Uh, Joe makes a good point. We come out of this year, we've got six hundred thousand some odd dollars in surplus. Only anticipated about seven hundred. But when we stopped and looked at it, that six hundred thousand is made up of a hundred and eighty-six thousand that we have not put into five-year cap yet. It also does not reflect that's large amount of interest, which was almost seventy-five thousand dollars. We didn't forecasted five, five hundred dollars, we had seventy-four thousand dollars above and beyond. We did not buy a new splat car, we did not buy a new pickup truck, the public ones. We also had a reduction in salaries. Public Works had to go without part-time help. So we saved a lot of money by not paying anybody.
And at the same time.
And right now, it looks like we're really on top of the world, but as Joe said. We're not gonna get one splat car next year, we're gonna have to buy two. We're gonna have to find, get that truck for public works. When we get all that said done, this time next year. Uh, what's the number? Right now, we're sitting on a balance of six thousand four hundred, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. In five-year cap. This time next year, we'll have a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars left.
And it's also.
And we've got to go on from there.
And, and nobody likes paying taxes, but we've gone from Sleepy Hollow, we've. Said we want the community we have, we've turned down op- opportunities to expand west to do other things, it's, you know, we, we want, we should. We want these things, we should maybe chip, I wouldn't mind chipping another couple of dollars a month on my property taxes. And if you look at the detailed part of your tax bill, what some people don't, because it's just tied to their mortgage. The amount that you're paying, I'm paying to Sleepy Hollow, but this is four hundred, you know, hundred dollars or so. It's not much for the services.
Top five point seven percent of yours uh, total debt, so.
I also attended a, an economic forecast this past week and we have reached the peak for interest rates. And this is within three years, we're gonna be back, back down, you know, below three percent. So uh.
Oh, yeah.
The easy money is not.
The easy money is gone. I mean, the, the sustainability is going to be a question going forward. And it has been. I mean, ever since I stepped on this board, how many more days is Sleepy Hollow got to go? So uh, a property tax hike in the future. It's not a maybe, it's a going to be, it's gonna have to be. And the residents are gonna have to make up their.
Yeah, I mean, inflation would not be.
Cost of grown out. We're looking at a budget here that. I must say, it's been a long time in coming in ways. We have got a heck of a kick in salaries that are well deserved. I feel we should have in the budget, but it is gonna put us on call. For what, you know, going forward to maintain this and sustain it. And that's it folks, you know, get the crystal ball, but in your future, there will be another referendum on our property tax. And if it doesn't pass, we've already looked into those scenarios. And some villages Sleepy Hollow cannot sustain itself. We just unincorporate and we go back to the county. Or we get picked up by one of the neighboring communities. However, that process is not clean and simple either.
Well, parties have to vote.
All parties have to vote.
And I will say, the, becoming part of the colony, we have a sewer and water system, so back last Mark condemned, you know, he was briefing on this the last time. And then we then basically need to create a sewer and water department to run this. Which, so now you're hiring, you basically have the same public works, but just supported by sewer and water, so. And a sewer district, so you're, you end up with less services and more taxes, it's more expensive, it's the way it was brought, numbered out, so.
I'd like to add a comment. I want to thank everybody for staying for the rest of the meeting and learning what's going on in the village. Since joining the board years ago. I've come to see of this village, we're hanging on by our nails financially. We're doing everything we can to save a dollar here and there, and that leads. To a comment. We're hanging on by our nails, but luckily due to the volunteerism in this community, I'm proud to be part of this community. I see the service club. All the things they do in the village. I don't mean to embarrass Bill, but Bill for years. Volunteers, gathered volunteers, walked up and down the roads and clears. I'm proud to be part of this village, but folks, we're hanging on by our nails financially. I applaud the volunteerism that I see.
And I did say, especially the last five or six years, this is more people than I've seen in the room tonight than some of the other meetings. I mean, it's just, it's nice to have people here. I, let me just sit, I guess I forgot, this is gone. I've got one email in the last year from a resident, that was this afternoon. I've got no phone calls. I got one phone call from somebody on a water issue for the house that burned down, I fixed that, but. My, I think my phone number's published, I always told, wanted to give my cell phone number out. Nobody's called me about this, the water issue with the fire hydrant. And I'm retired, I got plenty of time, I just, you know, so, so thank you for staying. Yeah, thank you, thanks.
Thank you. And P-Tel has not been our friend, um, it's P-Tel, so we are limited. On how much we can raise in property taxes every year to the lower of. Cost of living or, you know, into a present index or five percent. Um, so for the past several years, we've all been able to raise the uh, the amount from the levy. By like two or three percent in this past time, when I think it was, the CPI was nine percent, we all could only raise it five percent, so. We, we, we're not even keeping up with inflation.
So I'm gonna be on the board for like two weeks, so it's my last full meeting. I'm still available for two weeks and even after that, my phone number, Eugene has it, it should be on our website. I'm more than happy, I, I know Bill has my number, he is numerous times with questions or otherwise, my head, so. I shouldn't say it, but I, since you know, I have more calls from you than anybody else, so.
Just to follow up to what trustee Nemec is saying. Uh, you know, when I ran four years ago, I wanted to be the voice of the people and, and I know that. Just putting our, put, each of us putting ourselves out there and experiencing neighbors or comments or phone calls. Uh, I've been in New Jersey since last Thursday, uh, visiting family and I probably had seven phone calls. And two emails, you know, regarding everything that transpired this evening. Uh, we, we all have a, a role in what we're doing and. And it's also very, very important that residents have a role as well. And prior to me joining the board, I used to come to the meetings just to watch the dynamic of the board. And I'm not a politician by any means, but it's nice. If more residents can be involved on a regular basis, then you really get a feel for the struggles and the challenges. And the successes that the board achieves, but when we sit up there on the table. And nobody's sitting in front of us, it gets a little bit depressing because we all sit there and say, wow. I guess residents don't care, but if this is a time where that now will change. And, you know, have it more dialogue and more conversation, it makes the board stronger, it makes the vill- the residents stronger. Ultimately, makes the village of Sleepy Hollow stronger, so that's all I had to say.
Can I say one last thing?
My last thing, you know.
The last thing, so I was on, on the board the last century and when I left last time, it's like my kids are younger, I want to spend more time with them. Um, the kids went off to college, President Pickett had an empty seat and he goes, Joe. You said that you were off the board and spend more time with your children, your children off of college. Come spend some more time with us, so he offered me a seat to fill in for two years. I enjoyed it so much, I enjoyed working with President Pickett, has put more work into this village than I've seen. Any other president since I have lived in the village almost thirty years. So I, you know, Steve is integrity, he's trying to make the village work, he goes to more meetings, visits more people, talks to more people. Um, networks amongst everything. Um, I just want to thank you Steve for giving this opportunity, because I don't think that you. If you had not asked me to come fill in that seat over at Harney City now, I probably wouldn't have run again and I enjoyed. I would have done it for any other president with you, but I've stayed on the board this whole time, so thank you very much, Steve.
That was only twenty years ago, and how long have you been across Steve?
I was, the first time was in ninety-six, I think, and then I took some time off and I came back, yeah.
Well, thank you, Andy Anthony, thank you both, since this will be your last meeting.
Yeah, it's full meeting, we got, we'll hope to see you guys on the first of May. Uh, we will have two meetings.
Well, since, since I'm banished to outer space, I don't know whether I'll be able to make the May first meeting.
Cause don't you're on the other side of the moon. Just don't stay on the dark side, Anthony.
I know.
We talked around about it.
Is your motion in your second?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we've discussed.
Yeah, okay. So everybody's had their say on the budget and. Whatever else they wanted to talk about, let's have a roll call. Mr. Brado.
Hello, I say yes.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Nibb.
Hi.
Mr. Nibb.
Yes.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, we have a budget, thank you everyone all. Thank you, Eugene. Okay, water and sewer, Mr. Nibb, you got a huddle.
I, the last thing I'm trying to get off my to-do list here, so, as you all remember, we had a resident whose culvert was. We agreed to pay for the replacement of his culvert after water main break. The resident then came to the village and said, hey, I'm gonna repay my whole driveway, just give us the money, which we agreed to do. Um, we authorized that, Eugene still has the check pending them getting the. Finishing the work that they're required to do for the building permission, Mrs. Detmer was still here, they have not done it. My understanding is she's not been able to contact him and get it done. After talking to Mrs. Detmer and Attorney Schuster and Eugene and Kyle. I would like to authorize, I might move to authorize Kyle to get a contractor to perform the work. To up to the, the standards that Mrs. Detmer and Jeff Steele have requested. And then the leftover that balance, that should be cheaper, will be given to the residents. Uh, to pay for the damage to his culvert. And a letter from Attorney Schuster saying that this is payment in full for the damage and that his assignment for accepts a check. And a letter from Attorney Schuster saying that this is payment in full for the damage, and that he has to sign a free acceptance check. That's the longest motion I made, Stephen. Well, basically, we're on, basically, so to summarize that, this part of discussion now, so It's five thousand dollars. Barb is having, getting nowhere, there is damage to the village's swale that would have gotten fixed by this culvert replacement if he had done it. So just to get it all cleaned up and done and get the gentleman his check, we're just gonna authorize Kyle to get, because we don't have the equipment to do it, it's gonna be a while. Just to hire a contractor to do it, Kyle thinks he can get done for us two thousand dollars. The work will be done, make sure Barb is happy, Jeff Steele is happy, give him the check, but Attorney Schuster had suggested that before we hand him the check, we get a, just an authorization saying that this is a payment in full, so he's accepting this payment in full for the damage to his
We're gonna give him a time limit to get it done?
That's right, thank you. Eugene had suggested, or I think, that we send him a letter, registered letter, saying you have fifteen days to get this done. If not, we're gonna do it, and this is what the plan is, and Eugene, you're gonna, you're gonna do that? Forgot that part, that's part of the motion, that's fifteen day, thank you, Eugene. Just to clean it up and just to get it done.
With this change of the motion? I was just checking.
And Eugene, you're going to take it up front, that's gonna go on.
All right, any further comments or discussion concerning this arrangement? If not, roll call please. Mr. Hurney. Mr. Dally. Mr. Thorin. Mr. Brando.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, and which itself carries.
That's all.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, next item, police and public safety, Mr. Deathley.
Uh, just one quick thing, just want to thank Attorney Schuster, Chief Barbara and Joe Nemic and myself, we were the negotiating committee for the, uh, what the bargaining with the police. Um, a lot of time was spent and a lot of work was put into it, and I appreciate all you gentlemen's help with that, so thank you very much. And that's it, President.
All right, thank you, Steve. Uh, the next one is building and environment, Mr. Corn.
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mark. And building and zoning, Mr. Barano.
No report, sir.
Thank you, Anthony, and old business, any old business to come before the board? Okay, no old business? New business, new business to come before the board. One thing before we go out of new business, it's more of a comment. The Service Club has their fiftieth anniversary celebration, group twenty-ninth of April. So if you haven't registered for it, you might want to, to get in there and get to it. I was a little late in getting it to you because you guys now have the credit card thing. And I realized that when I started to register earlier, and I was gonna be paying for my meal before I ate. So I registered. My credit card won't bill me now until after I do.
I just registered today too, and I'm busy.
Okay, no new business?
I move with your turn, second.
Move to second, roll call please. Mr. Nemic.
Aye.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, we are still adjourned, so you may first.